Good evening, I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board meeting to order on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, 6:30 PM. As a part of the call to order, our recording and taping notification will be read. I hope everybody understands, as required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. Is anybody recording? Thank you. As a matter of protocol, we've got a rather action-packed agenda this evening. I'd like everyone to understand that we are glad you're here, we welcome you, and we will make sure that you get your chance to speak if you would like to speak, but we will do it in order and we will be respectful of one another. I am also going to say that we've got a brand-new member here, Bill Stoltz. Bill, we're very pleased to have you and thank you for volunteering your time to the town of Harwich.
Again.
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 Okay, at this point, Charlene, a little advice here, do we just...
Little advice. I'm gonna, I'm suggesting that you take the last public hearing regarding the town of Harwich Cemetery for the pet burial ground out of order, as they are requesting a continuance to the 25th of June.
Okay.
So you will need to actually open that hearing and then there would need to be a motion to continue it.
Thank you, Charlene. So let's, let's begin the public hearing, per the advice of Charlene Greenall-Hausch, with number 2D, PB 2019-14. Town of Harwich Burial Ground, as owner, seeks approval of a site plan review, special permit with waivers, to establish a pet burial grounds with walking paths, parking area, and a gazebo. The property is located at 276 Queen Anne Road, MAP 69, parcel M1, in the I-L zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and 325-55.
I'll make a motion.
At, at the request of Robin Kelly, who's the cemetery administrator, we respectfully request to be heard on June 25th agenda due to staffing comments. We look forward to working with our new town engineer, town engineer to complete this project.
And move that we continue the public hearing for PB 2019-14, the town of Harwich Pet Burial Ground, be continued to June 25th, 2019, at 6:30 PM.
Second. We'll take a vote by roll call first. In absentia, David Harris.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary? Bill?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
It's, carry it as unanimous.
Good, thank you very much.
We do have one absentee.
Yep, so his vote won't...
Yep.
And, and I would recommend, as we go to each i, next item we announce, just in case people happen to come in.
Okay. So then, Charlene, you advise we go back to the order.
I do, and you've already read this into the record. It has been quite a while since they've actually physically been before you. You may just want to read the notice in, just to remind people what the, what the case is about.
I agree, we'll do that. So we're beginning this, this part of the meeting with... Somebody have a cellphone? Thank you very much. So this is PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC is applicant, care of Matthew Bombasi PE, Bowler Engineering Representative, Bruce McGregor. Sunrise Nominee Trust, as owner, seeks approval of a site plan review, special permit with waivers, to construct a 7,489 plus or minus square foot retail structure and a use special permit for structures requiring 20 or more parking spaces. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-09, -51, and -55. The properties are located at 48 and 52 Route 28, ten parcels D4-1 and -2, in the C-H-1 and R-R zoning districts. And this is continued from 4/9/2019. Charlene?
Just to, a reminder to the board, the last time there was actually any testimony on this, I think was February...
26.
26, so it, it's been a while. I've tried to keep you up to date on the staff reports. As Mr. Stoltz is the newest member, he can certainly ask questions, but he is ineligible to vote. There are only five board members, I was gonna say physically here, but Dave obviously is on the phone. He does count towards the vote. Because there are only five members who are eligible to vote on this, it would need to be a unanimous decision for this to pass.
Okay.
The applicant is aware of that. I did notify them yesterday when I heard from Mr. Peterson that he was not going to be here. I notified the applicant and you all immediately, so...
Okay. So, yeah, on the floor.
Good evening, for the record, Matthew Bombasi with Bowler Engineering, here with Chad Brubaker from the applicant Harwich Retail LLC. We were here previously on February 26th and give a quick recap of things since that hearing. We've made a few plan changes as a result of that hearing and some additional coordination with DOT and, and engineering staff. One change is, Ms. Lowsky had mentioned it at the hearing on the 26th, and also stat, it was in the staff report from, from that hearing, was to implement a landscape valand at the front of the building. The purpose of that is to help alleviate any potential traffic conflicts for cars coming in that driveway, and then perhaps backing out of the spaces we previously had in the front of the building, so we've, we've implemented that. We have been courting with DOT, we submitted an application, we got their comments back recently, which we provided to Charlene. As a result of though, they had some minor driveway configuration tweaks as far as their preferences on driveway radii, exactly how it lines up, but generally is, is as it was proposed and shifted just ahead to the left in the driveway radii, just extended a bit for their requirements. We did some minor modifications to utilities. DPW had, had let us know there's a pavement moratorium on Depot Road West, so bringing our utilities off, off Main Street where we would have the pavement trench cut into Depot Road West. We've also had some ongoing discussions with the police. Prior to the hearing on the 26th, we had provided them with an updated traffic memorandum, which gave them a, a range of different trip generations. I know they had asked about what the use would be, or if there would be alternates. With that memo, memo summarized was that the use we picked is the most, I guess conservative, meaning the most trips that would be a result of, of retail use. There are other retail uses, there would be less trips. We also summarized some potential summer peak hour numbers that we could give them. The way we did it is, I guess, industry standard, but we could use Cape Cod Commission data to try to add a percentage to what we had estimated as a conservative measure. Thoroughly, they had asked about the site distance for the driveway on Depot Road West. There's some arborvitae's along the road, north of the site, they're in the right-of-way, but they both, they're attended, attended to the residential building up there. Working with Lieutenant Concinde, and we agreed to remove two of those shrubs. Chad has talked to the, the owner, they're obviously very sensitive about their screening for their house, but they're remenable to at least removing a couple, and I believe Lieutenant Concinde, I'm educated, that was acceptable to him, and he's here. I know the board wanted to talk to him when you were there before.
He's now the deputy chief.
Deputy chief, I'm sorry, that's right, deputy chief Concinde. I can give a quick rundown of things that we talked about. At the last hearing, we've done a Title V inspection, this is a system out there that's passed. We'll have to put a new septic tank and pump chamber in, but we're gonna reuse that system and ask to provide it to the Board of Health. DOT, we've gotten their comments, we've resubmitted to them, and their driveway's acceptable to them. The drain has been reviewed by the town engineer, and again, that was acceptable. They had questioned whether we could connect out to the roadway, and we're not gonna provide that connection, so they were good. Architecture, we went through the, the architecture last hearing, I'm happy to go through it again. Said you're providing gable roofs, fibered siding, some shingle siding, peaked roofs, window features, awnings over the windows and doors. There were no architectural requirements specifically, but having talked to Charlene, prior to even beginning the design sheet, indicated, you know, something that would kind of fit the character of the area would be preferable to the board, so we put a real good effort in to provide something that's not gonna look, like an eyesore, actually looked, looked nice. And then lastly, a Butter's comments, some of Butter's comments read into the record last hearing, primarily two issues that I remember. One was screening the Butters to the rear of the property, had written letters or emails that addressed that. We have a six-foot-high wood fence going the entire length of the back of the property. We've also pulled the, the parking and the building away from that district, that residential district in those properties as much as possible, just to provide as much buffer as we can there. All lighting's directed away from there, we have backlight shields, so anything we could do to mitigate that. And another item that came up, maybe not from the Butters back there, but emails Charlene had had was just the existing building. We've been in front of Historic District Commission, it took them onto demolition delay bylaw, which we intend to respect, but under this project, ultimately, we're anticipating the building would be removed.
Thank you very much. Charlene?
Actually, Deputy Chief Concinde is here, so if the board did have any questions of him, I would defer to him at this point. You know, there were some questions regarding the site distance and, and things like that. I don't know if the board is now comfortable with the explanation and presentation provided by the engineer that, that, that has been addressed, but that was the issue previously, was the line of sight distance.
Yep, Charlene.
But he is here, if anybody has any questions.
Any, does anybody...
I do.
Chad?
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi Deputy.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in. My question is regarding the entrance and, and egress from Route 28, and just wondering, is it, would it help with traffic concerns on Route 28? Because I know at the public, previous public hearing, there was a concern about increase in traffic and the traffic studies that were done. So my question is, is it even feasible? Would it make sense, would it help if the cut, curb cut, if you will, from Route 28 is only an entrance to the property, and all traffic would be directed to exit the property onto Depot Road West, which would, if people are trying to get back out to 28, at least put it through a, I don't know what the right word is, controlled intersection that has a stop sign versus trying to come out onto 28, especially if you're coming out of the lot and trying to take a left to go east?
So that was one of our first requests and concerns. Matt was working with MassDOT, who has the ultimate say in that, so as a local police department, being a state road, we can certainly suggest, which we did, but the ultimate say would come from MassDOT, and I know Matt has some answers on that.
Yeah, we did talk to MassDOT, we've had their comments, they're comfortable with the full access driveway. I know they're planning to do some upgrades through 28 at some point, to hopefully leave it, I know there's some traffic concerns over in Dennis that, that back up in this area, but they were fully comfortable with the, with the full access driveway.
So, does that override if, if we were to, could we make that a, a condition if we felt that that were necessary? Can we override MassDOT? They approved it, they didn't say you couldn't. No.
No.
Okay.
No, and, you know, from my experience, from me at least, if I went to a business like this, I would obviously exit off of the side road. Obviously, not everybody does that. We did have some questions on the trip generator numbers, because, and Matt and I spoke about the difference between our seasonal community here, where I still had some questions about trip generating numbers based on summertime. And I don't think necessarily those numbers used calculate into the amount of business a particular retail environment will get in the summer, as opposed to even this time of year. So, that was my only question on the, on the trip generation estimates. As far as we are taking out one bush on the corner of the property, on Deeper Road West, looking north, and then, as Matt did say, I did have some concerns about those arborvitae's in front of the residence, which is just north of this property. And I will say that they've been great with working with that resident and addressing our concern, is, the, the problem we have with arborvitae's is two things. It's great for the residents, it screens that particular residence from any traffic coming out of that side road near the old town building there. But in the winter, we don't have many issues with arborvitae's there, it's cold, they suck up, they try to conserve their own heat, but in the summertime, they let loose and they become large, and they've already started to do that. So, I always bring arborvitae's up into a discussion when we review a safety plan like this, because if they're not an issue now, in five to 10 years, they're gonna be a huge issue for us, and we're gonna be dealing with it rather than dealing with it now. So, I am confident that if the resident does say we can take out two of those, that will give us the sightline distance at 200 feet, which is the minimum here that, that is, that is required. So I think around 180, 200 right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My turn?
Is, is, are there, is there anything, Charlene, that you'd like read into the record for this?
There are four letters that you have, if you wanna read those in before I do my part, that's probably a good idea.
Okay. So I'll begin, and this is for the record. This is a letter received on March 26th, and it is from Elizabeth Williams. "My name is Elizabeth Williams, I own the business and property directly across the street from this proposed Dollar General store. I am here again to plead for my town and my village. If you have any doubt that this is a Dollar General store, all you have to do is travel down Route 28 to West Yarmouth, to see the exact same store designs being shown to us here. There is a 7-Eleven convenience store that sells cigarettes and grab-and-go items barely a quarter mile away. There is a dollar store across the street from that in Dennisport. There are too, too many empty retail spaces in Dennisport and Harwich already, also in East Harwich. We do not want or need this big box store and parking lot in West Harwich. The town of Eastham has rejected this store. You would not put this business in Harwich Port or Harwich Center, but in West Harwich, this is considered, because this historic building's owner has been allowed to practice wanton demolition by neglect, thus threatening the fabric of our village." In, in parance, "The owners of Bishop's Terrace are being allowed to do the same," close parance. "This area of Route 28 is Harwich's front door. Is this the face we wish..." Sorry about that.
That was loud.
This is Dave Harris, please leave a message.
Can I move that we take a 10-minute recess?
Yep.
Move to recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sorry folks, we're going to take a brief recess until we can get another... I should probably explain. I have David Harris, who's a planning board member, calling in from a remote location for the meeting, and we apologize, but I wanted you to know exactly what we were doing and why.
And he's participating.
And he's participating in this meeting, and he's, his, his attention to this and his vote are very important.
Well, they're necessary, otherwise we'd like to continue this.
Okay, so 10 minutes.
Yep. I'll try and...[1168.83]
Back to order, please. Man, that was pretty quiet, pretty fast. Thank you. Okay, so I'm reading, and we were interrupted, David. I was reading into the record a correspondence from Elizabeth Williams, and I'm going to pick up where we left off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. The area of Route 28 is Harwich's front door. Is this the face we wish to present to our visitors? Is progress ripping up our neighborhood and destroying our heritage? We need careful, thoughtful planning. Our village needs help to go up, not down. Next, I have correspondence. Another one from February 26th. This is also from Elizabeth Williams. I am a 13th generation Cape Cod and Harwich native, business owner across the street at 45 Route 28, West Harwich. For the past 20 years, my husband and I have been restoring and maintaining the buildings there that date from 1827. Cape Cod is a very unique place. The country as we know it started here, and many descendants of the original settlers still call it home and cherish that long history. There are not many places in the United States where generations have lived continuously for 400 years, and that so many of those homes, from the 17th, 18th, and 19th century, both modest and grand still stand, and set the tone for the architecture throughout the Cape. Whether you grew up here or have recently moved here, we are all the stewards of this history. We owe it to our town and future generations to preserve what is uniquely ours. The people of West Harwich are working hard, trying to preserve our heritage and the character of our village by establishing a National Register District. This is largely a residential area with small businesses scattered in. Many of the retail buildings that are here are empty, as are many of the retail spaces in Dennisport, less than half a mile away. We have reached out to owners of 52 Route 28 to see if the home eventually, partially, could be saved. They were not interested in meeting or working with us. Our history and our heritage doesn't matter. It can all be swept away for cheesy dollar stores and strip malls without even a conversation. Why can't we have thoughtful planning that would support our village? Next, this is, this also came on the 25th. Hello, Charlene, and planning board members. I had a conversation the other day with Sarah Korgiev.
Sarah Korgiev.
Korgiev, head of the historic preservation, of historic preservation at Cape Cod Commission. I'm sharing information I learned regarding referrals to the Cape Cod Commission in the hopes that you might consider referring this project. Ordinarily, an automatic referral to Cape Cod Commission is generated with new projects that are 10,000 square feet and above. In this case, we are dealing with a 7,000-square-foot project. I learned that this project could still be referred in one of two ways. The first would be that as a board, you refer this project to the Cape Cod Commission as a request for a formal discretionary opinion on the project. The second approach would be for the planning board to request an informal review through the director of the Cape Cod Commission. In this manner, support services evaluate and give opinions on the impacts of the project. This could be directed toward impact to historic character of the area, parking impacts, water resources, et cetera. As a neighborhood group working toward a National Register Historic District, we would appreciate this type of input. Sarah Korgiev is well acquainted with the area after a site visit with the Massachusetts Historical Commission. I was absent at the first hearing, but appreciate the consideration and time you are giving this project so that we can get the best possible outcome for Harwich. Thank you, Sally Urbano. Next, and this is also sent to Charlene, and it's about the raising of Captain Winchell Baker House. It begins, really, "The Domino's Pizza is barely alive. There is an empty retail space next to the church. The carpet plaza is rundown, empty, and then there is the fallow bank slash door hardware structure across the street. Also, there is another empty retail space at Ocean State, next to a Dollar Tree, numerous half-dead, empty structures along Route 28, including Bennys right next door in Dennisport. So you think a retail space will work there? Ludicrous. Restore the building, maybe two apartments, first and second floor, or create retail on the first floor. Coffee shop, a kitsch general store. Have this structure be an anchor for the newly-created quote-unquote neighborhood. Stop for a developer who can create X amount of residential structures slash condos in a Greek revival style to fit that lot. Imagine, as you approach the area traveling west on 28, you would see, in perens, depending on the design, closed perens, alternating gable ends of the structures, detailed entryways with stoops, and tree-lined sidewalks. Walking distance to shops and restaurants. Make it a destination, not another parking lot with a concrete building and neon lights. That is not planning. So many people would like a place on the Cape. Give them that opportunity. Plus, the tax revenue is greater than a commercial property that will eventually go under and then lie vacant. Guaranteed, maybe partner with Dennisport and help bring back their retail. Again, create the destination. There is plenty of unused commercial space. We don't need any more. Regards, William Quoc, Bain Street, Harwich, designer/dressman Rick Roy, Construction, Harwich, Mass." At this point, that is, that is all we have to read into the record. From the board, Mr. McParland.
Gentlemen, my question is, the property on the corner of Depot and Main, the, I guess it was the parish house at one time, what's your intention to do with that?
The existing building?
Yep.
That's under demolition delay. Our intention at this time would be to remove it. We have to wait until September to do so.
And, and then what? Anything?
Nothing at this time.
You're just gonna leave the property?
That would just become landscaping area in that spot.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Could we have, if I may, could we have Charlene's?
Charlene?
I generally don't do this part of what I'm gonna say, but while we had the recess, I did have a couple of folks come up to me and ask, "So if this gets, if this was approved tonight, that's it." And, you know, people were concerned about the process. And what folks need to understand is, the planning board and myself can only go by what's in the zoning bylaw. That's what we're governed by. And, you know, not that I don't agree with some of the comments that I've heard here tonight, and yes, I'm, I'm a preservationist, I'm an environmentalist, I'm an affordable housing advocate, but I also have to go by what our zoning bylaw says. And saying that, this is a commercial zoning district, and under the site plan review provision, it does state that the planning board, if a plan meets the requirements of this bylaw, and the planning board rules and regulations governing subdivisional land and site plan is amended, the planning board shall approve it. I just want you people to understand what our zoning bylaw says. If you don't like the zoning bylaw, if you don't like the fact that this area is zoned commercial, then there needs to be a movement to change that. And I'm happy, I've already met with several folks in that area to look at doing some zoning changes, but until those changes occur, you know, the board and, and myself as the planner, we're governed by what the bylaw says. So I just wanted to, to make sure that, that people knew that. You may not understand it, but that's what the board has to go by. So that being said, just a number thing, they have requested one waiver, and that is from the parking requirements. It does require 40 parking spaces. They ask, they are asking for a waiver of 30. I'm glad Mr. McParland brought up about the, the older structure there, what's gonna happen with that. It will be green space, Joe, but what they have shown is if they need additional parking, that's where that will be, and that does show on, on one of the other plans that the board has reviewed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Going on, I did say please refer to my comments from my February 5th report. I'm gonna use first names, sorry. Matt has been in touch and continued the conversations with the deputy chief. The latest revised plans have addressed concerns that I had raised regarding the location of the handicap parking spaces. Those were relocated. The latest revised plan has been changed to address comments from mass DOT, resulting in changes in, they've introduced a landscape island in front of the building, per staff comments, modifications to the Route 28 entrance to accommodate for mass DOT's requests, and grading and landscaping modifications to accommodate those changes. The existing lot line between the two parcels will need to be expunged. The following condition is recommended. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, an approval not required plan shall be fired, filed to the planning board showing the merging of 48 and 52 Route 28, shown on assessor's maps 10, as parcels D-4-1 and D-4-2. That's essentially merging those lots into one. The plan has been designed to pull the development away from the road right-of-way to the north of the site. The rear portion of numbers 48 and 52 Route 28 are located within the RM zoning district, so there is a little sliver of land. You can see it along the top where it is in the residential zone. There's no development or changes proposed within that area. The proposed landscaping for the site is adequate. There have been generic sign plans provided. Signage will need to comply with the sign code requirements within the zoning bylaw, and proper sign permits will be required from the building department. This should be included as a condition. The required waiver for the parking at this time appears adequate and appropriate. The applicant has provided a plan, item H above, showing that the availability of an additional 10 spaces, should they be necessary. Of course, this does assume that the structure at 52 Route 28 will be demolished. A reminder that this is currently on a demolition delay imposed by the Historic District Historic Commission. The access onto Depot Road will have to comply with mass DPW requirement, or, excuse me, Harwich DPW requirements. There have been no, excuse me, I have asthma and it's kicking my, you know what, today, so I apologize. There has been no discussion regarding the hours of operation. The board may wish to condition hours. That is within your purview for site plan review and approval. If the existing structure is to be, is to remain and used for any allowable use by right or special permit, a revised plan would be required, and the applicant would be required to return to the planning board to modify the site plan's special permit for use if applicable. Recommended, the, the standard conditions be imposed, and the newest revised plan, in fact, when I, when I wrote, now shows an outdoor area for display. This area is outside the setback requirement and would not impede pedestrian traffic along the front walkway. However, per the zoning bylaw, use table, outdoor display of retail sales does require a use special permit. If, I'm recommending that this would be a condition of approval. If they choose not to have outdoors display of goods, then they don't need that use special permit. If they decide they want to, then they would need to come back to this board for a use special permit. And that does conclude my comment.
Okay. Any more questions?
I have a question.
Bill?
Can the board ask for changes in the exterior architecture?
Under our zoning bylaw, there are, there's no provision for the board to review, to, we are, we require that they show us what it's gonna look like.
Right.
So that we make sure that, you know, grading and, and that kind of stuff works, and it's handicap accessible, and loading zones make sense, and all that kind of thing. But we have no provision in our zoning bylaw for review of architectural features.
Because I thought in the past you did.
You, you may have, but it was not necessarily appropriate based on the zoning bylaw. If this were a historic district, just like anything done on Main Street here in Harwich Center, it does have to go through the historic board first for review and approval before it comes to, to this board.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, this is David. I have a question.
Yep.
They indicate that the 30 parking spaces would be sufficient because this is expected to be a low-traffic generator. It's a retail use. On what, what is the basis for that expectation?
Sure. Yeah, I, I can address that. So when we submitted a traffic memorandum, we submitted the most aggressive, I guess, of the most trips that would be expected. Chad and the applicant has extensive experience in all types of different retail.
It's, I, I don't know if it's the, because of the micro, but it's very garbled. It's very hard to understand the response.
If you wanna hold that a little closer, perhaps?
So when we submitted a traffic memorandum, we submitted it for the most, I guess, aggressive use of the most trips that would be expected. Chad and the applicant, Harwich Retail LLC, have extensive experience.
That's, that's no better.
Oh, no better.
I can, I can hear the, I can hear the chairman. I can hear Charlene very well, but, but your voice is just, it's a lot of echo and so on. I just can't understand it.
I'm gonna suggest you might go to the podium, if that's okay, Matt?
We're gonna try the podium, David. Let us know. That works.
All right.
Hey, David, can you hear me?
Is that better?
Well, your, your voice is clear.
Can you hear Matt?
Hey, David, can you hear me?
Go ahead and, and continue to speak, but it doesn't sound anywhere near as clear as everyone else's voice.
Sure. So we've submitted a traffic memorandum for the proposed retail use. We picked the most aggressive use, so the use that's gonna generate the most traffic.
It's no different, no different than the previous mic that was used. So it's still garbled.
Try this.
Hey, David, can you hear me?
Yes, that's much better.
Except that they didn't.
That was good. So, so we've submitted a traffic memorandum for, basically, what's the most aggressive trip generation use.
You, you, you don't have to talk quite so loud.
Okay. Messing with me?
I don't know. Just keep going. I don't think so. Just hold him like this.
Sure. So our applicant, Chad, with Harwich Retail LLC, has extensive experience in, in all types of different retail developments. 30 parking spaces, his experience and, and the tenants' experiences, is more than enough to serve their needs. Certainly, what their concern is, is not providing enough parking spaces, because they need to be able to park for their customers, and, and they feel that this would be, be more than enough. Incidentally, ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, also publishes data for, for parking demand, which is very similar to the trip generation demand, except for it calculates how many parking spaces would be required. In a case like this, for a 6,000-square-foot of retail space, it's gonna be just under 30 parking spaces per, per that handbook. So there are technical data that we can use to determine how many parking spaces we'll need too, but a lot of it's based on just our tenants' needs. We know that the tenants that we're looking at will need no more than 30 spaces, so rather than building that pavement and parking, which we have room to do, just leave that as green space and landscaping.
Okay, now, Charlene?
Yes.
Charlene, can you explain again to me what, what the process is for approval of the demolition of the existing building on the corner to allow them to use that, that lot for parking spaces? Should it require additional spaces?
Because this was a building that is over 100 years old, and Mary can correct me if I'm wrong here. The applicants went to the Historic District Historic Commission back in, I believe it was September of 2018, and did present evidence to them to demolish the building. The Historic Commission decided that they would impose a 12-month demolition delay on this building. So that if, for some reason, the applicant decided they wanted to use it, or if somebody wanted to buy it and move it, or what have you, there would be that opportunity for that to happen. But they're not obligated to find somebody to, to take it or use it, or they're not obligated to use it. It's just a delay so that if somebody is interested, that is a possibility.
Okay, but that, there's, there's no regulatory requirement after this 12 months? They are, they are free to demolish it at that point?
They are free to demolish it at that point, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, Charlene, one of the, one of the things that keeps coming up in this discussion is about this as a, an historic district. This, this area of Harwich is, the folks are applying for it to be an historic district, or is it an historic district?
This is gonna be a general, quick overview, and if I mess up, I'm sure somebody will correct me. They did get preliminary review of the, of the corridor through Mass Historic to have this, to see if it would be eligible for designation as a historic district, and it's my understanding that it did reach that, but it hasn't gone through any process to actually become a historic district. to actually become a historic district.
As of today.
As of today.
Okay. Well, that, is there a chance that will happen by the time we reach the one-year mark on this building?
It requires the town meeting to vote that, so unless there's a special town meeting. Oh, wait, no, it doesn't. It does not take a town meeting vote. I'm thinking of a different type of...
Just a point of clarification, for a historic district or for a National Register historic district? Because there's a difference.
There's a difference.
There is a difference. If it becomes a National Register of Historic District, there is still no formal review process. It just means you're in historic district. If you create a historic district, similar to what was done in Harwich Center, Chatham has what's called the HBDC, Historic Business District Commission. So, anything in a, in a commercial district also falls under the jurisdiction of the HBDC, and they get to review buildings and decide if a building works. So, there are a couple different types of ways to do that. But a historic district under the town takes town meeting approval.
Okay. Mary?
So, just a follow-up. National Historic Register District is a wonderful designation.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, it still doesn't give the Harwich Historic District Historical Commission the purview to go through a certificate of appropriateness, which is what all projects in a historic district are required to go through. So, for example, seven-eleven Main Street here in Harwich Center, the, had to come before the Historic Commission for a certificate of appropriateness on the project. Unfortunately, that's because, that is because it was a historic district under the town zoning bylaw.
Under the town's general bylaw.
Under the town's general bylaw. It is not the, a National Historic Register District, doesn't give it the same, the same...
Designation.
Designation and authority.
Yeah, okay. Thank you both very much for that. So, any other comments by the board?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
My apologies, but I can't find Exhibit H, which was possibly with the first package, which is the parking exhibit dated January seventh, which I understand is the, assuming this passes, the building is demolished and additional parking is needed. I think that's what that plan is supposed to show. So, I can't find it, but I'd like to look at it, if you can find it or put it up. But the other question is, are we voting on that as well as part of the site plan review and the requested waivers? Or if that comes to pass, let's say, a year from now, do they have to come back to the board for an additional site plan review or anything to add on the ten or X number of spaces in that proposed space, if the building were to be demolished?
Generally, in the past, if they, if the development has shown an area for future parking, it's, hey, we need this extra parking, or the planning board or the police go, there's not enough parking here. It needs to get done. So, either the applicant can say, I need to do it, or the board, or even me as town planner, I can go, we got a problem here. You know, you have this area, it needs to be done. It's already been approved on the site plan. Generally, it does not have to come back. There should be notification to the town, you know, that we're going to start doing this. Certainly, the board can make it a condition that, you know, they need to notify the town that they are going to proceed with creating that additional parking.
Okay. Yeah, I would want to make sure that there were no additional, for example, or check with the police, additional curb cuts proposed for anything.
No, there's not. There are not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, okay, so, so they'd entrance, enter from here?
Yep.
And these are the additional, okay.
Yes, yep.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Excuse me.
Comments? Okay, now for the, for the public part of the hearing, which is very important. We'd like your name and your address, and then make your point. Get right to it. I'll give you a couple of minutes, and we'll try to get everybody up there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Alvis, seventy-seventh Smith Street, West Harwich. I have two letters I'd like to read from residents who could not be here tonight. The first is from Mary and John Rowan of thirty-seventh Smith Street. And they write that, "My wife and I have lived and paid taxes at thirty-seventh Smith Street, West Harwich, for over thirty years. We regret not being able to attend this important meeting, but want our feelings known in regards to the proposal for Dollar General store at the corner of Depot Road and Route twenty-eight. We feel very strongly that this is certainly not the best use of this parcel. This proposal is not in the best interests of West Harwich residents. The downtown Dennisport area does not seem to be a priority to the administration of the Town of Dennis. It seems to have been neglected for years, and it certainly shows. We hope that this mentality does not creep into Harwich via West Harwich. We are concerned this lack of interest would be detrimental to our neighborhood and the town. The proposal would not be considered in Harwich Center or Harwich Port. Why West Harwich? There is a Dollar store and an Ocean State Job Lot within a quarter-mile of this parcel. Do we need more of the same? Do you want a Dollar store to define our border between Dennis and the Dennis and Harwich border? We appreciate this opportunity to express our views." The second letter, letter comes from Virginia Doyle of forty-eight North Road, West Harwich, Mass.
What a night, oh, boy.
Time out. Sorry.
And it's a cell service.
Yeah.
You want another recess?
Try it.
Maybe, but we might be running out of time. We really shouldn't.
This is Dave Harris, please.
Move to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
We don't have to have him. We don't have to have him.
Yes, we do.
He can't vote.
Oh. Yeah. Bill can't vote. We've got to have his vote, so.
We good to go?
Good to go.
All right, so this letter's from Virginia Doyle of North Road. Dear members of the planning board, two important issues concerning the proposed historic Captain's Row district in West Harwich have come to my attention. The first relates to the proposed retail space to be located at the site of the Captain Baker House. As you may be aware, the citizens of West Harwich were successful in obtaining a demolition delay for this house, which is of architectural significance. Now, we learn that Harwich Retail LLC is applying to build a Dollar General store on the property. Within two-tenths of a mile of this proposed retail chain, we have a Dollar Tree store and an Ocean State Job Lot, both retail chains. This type of store will have a negative impact on the efforts to preserve Captain's Row. You have worked diligently with the owners of the suggested retail space in Harwich Center to ensure that, to ensure that the historic integrity is preserved in that section of town. The Patel's have listened to you, and the people of this historic district have adjusted their architectural plans accordingly. Will a chain store such as Dollar General be as respectful to the Captain's Row Historic District? My second concern was last night's problem for the selectments meeting, so I won't, I won't read that part.
Oh, please. All right. I'm a pretty patient person, okay? And what I would like to suggest is that we have a continuance on this issue. We do not have enough people to have a vote, right? Mr. Stoltz generously donated his time to this team.
He's not eligible to vote.
He's not eligible to vote on this. Alan Peterson is not here, and frankly, we don't have enough by having, you know, Mr. Harris call in repeatedly and failing. I really apologize to everybody who came out for this, and I, it's beyond our control, and I'm sorry, but we've got a lot of other issues that we're going to have to move forward on.
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue this matter to May fourteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? David isn't voting.
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, Bill can vote to continue.
You can vote to continue?
To continue.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Please.
Yes, please. I'll take those. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you, guys. I'm very sorry about this.
Sorry.
Thank you.
This is crazy.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we lost him again.
With our other matters.
Note the times we lost him in the recess. Well, we only did it twice.
The same.
We'll go forward.
Yeah, okay.
Can we just take a couple of minutes to acclimate and clean up?
Okay. We'll take five, another five-minute recess.
I feel like I'm juggling geese. And they're flying all over the place. Hurting cats.
Okay, so, the next, next item is PB twenty-nineteen dash twelve. Charlene, we're good to go on this.
Yep. I'm not, but yes.
So, I'll read this into, so this is PB twenty-nineteen dash twelve. Brian Langelier. Langelier, thank you very much. Etall and Janet Janetti, "As owners, seek approval of a site, plan review, special permit with waivers to configure the existing parking areas and to allow for mixed use, which requires a special permit for property located at eight fifteen Route twenty-eight, map twenty-four parcel W six dash two in the C dash H dash one zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-one dot M and fifty-five." Any, any comments on this issue or questions from the board?
May I introduce myself, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
All right. Thank you. Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port, representing the petitioners, Brian Langelier seated with me to my right, and Janet Janetti, trustees of the Janetti, Janetti Family Revocable Trust. We'll try to be, you know, there are more exciting things after us. We'll try to be, hopefully, your easy button tonight and get back to some semblance of normalcy.
Actually, if I might interject, I've just been notified by the applicant, the next application, that they will be seeking a continuance to May fourteenth. So, anybody's here for Stone Horse, the board will still have to open it and then vote to continue it, but I've just been notified verbally that they will be requesting a continuance.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlene. Please, Bill, sorry.
People want to leave.
So this is the property at 815 Route 28, and I call it South Harwich. This was the dive shop, had the big boat there. You all know where it is. The boat's gone, Mrs. McCarland. That's not been there for months now. The petitions are seeking a special permit for mixed-use development and for site plan approval. As you know, under the applicable section of the bylaw for mixed use, you have to have 10,000 -- in the CH1 zone, you have to have 10,000 square feet per residential unit. And we're proposing two units. The lot is 20,000 square feet. You also have to dedicate 30 -- at least 33% of the first floor facing the Main Street, Route 28, to commercial use. And we're dedicating almost 50% of that building that faces Route 28. There has always been one residential apartment to the rear of the property, and there was the swimming pool for the dive shop. The swimming pool's now gone, being replaced with the second residential apartment unit and the commercial space. The -- we have eliminated -- the petitioner has eliminated parking in front of the building as it faces Route 28 and replaced it with lawn, as you can see, a proposed lawn and some plantings. The green spots along Route 28. That makes for a better parking arrangement, as shown on the plan. I don't think the history of the usage of the building is particularly relevant. I would look at this as if it was a brand-new building. Does it meet the requirements? Yes, it has 10,000 square feet per residential unit. Does it have 33% at least of commercial space facing Route 28? Yes. So I think it's -- we meet those requirements. The swimming pool, the boat, the dive shop is irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned. We meet the requirements for a mixed-use development. We request a special permit this evening for that mixed-use development and the site plan approval on the basis that this project would not constitute a substantial detriment in the neighborhood and does not present or propose a substantial increase in noise, traffic, congestion. It's, in my opinion, making the whole situation better, legitimizing the building and the two apartments and so forth, and we'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charlene?
Yes, sir. As far as other staff comments, there were none. There were no concerns from either health, conservation, building, or fire. I'm getting worse, so please bear with me. The proposed changes to the property will be a vast improvement, in my planning opinion. This property has sat vacant for many years. To see this property revitalized, I do believe, is advantageous to the neighborhood. Assigned location has not been shown. If a sign is proposed, a condition is recommended that it must comply with the sign code and building department requirements. Wheel stops are not shown, however, it appears that they really would not be necessary based on the number of parking spaces. It's important to point out that the parking calculations are based on the use being in the category of a, quote, "furniture and home furnishing, large appliances, lumber, showroom, or other retail display of large items." So that has a less impactful parking requirement. The elimination of parking directly in front of the building and closing up the curb cut onto Route 28 is, in my opinion, an enhancement. The property has historically had two apartments. However, the permit trail is not entirely clear, so this application will actually bring this property into full compliance. There is an existing cart path on the easterly side of the property that serves, as I understand it, one dwelling. The parking, as proposed, would not inhibit access to and from this property, and I do believe that the waivers that are requested are reasonable.
Thank you, Charlene. Are there any comments or concerns from the board?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Any?
I do have a question.
Great.
Charlene, the public access to the shore, you just described on the easterly side and serving the unpaved driveway. Is that a town accepted?
No.
No?
It is not.
Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone that would care to speak up, please? Your name and address?
Jackie Edston, and I live at 826 Route 28, which is diagonally across from this development. And I'd like to say that I'm really glad to see the improvement that's being made there is being made -- done architecturally very -- in a very pleasing manner and restoring what had been a very nice, old, historic building at one time. And removal of the shed-like pool structure is welcomed. The only issue that I have is that the vacant lot to the side was divided illegally according to zoning many years ago. And development of that other lot, the vacant lot, I think would call into question the zoning compliance on that land. But anyway, as far as this building is going, it's a definite improvement, and congratulations on that.
Thank you so much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I've been around long enough to remember that Mrs. Edston was the chairman of this planning board in the past, if I remember correctly, for several years.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Crowell, and thank you very much for speaking up. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Sarah Chase, and I'm a neighbor at 825 Route 28, and I wanted to just say I am in approval of this change. And I'm very grateful to Brian for the improvements that he's made and the investment that he has made in this project. So thank you.
Oh, thank you so much for your comments. It's refreshing. Sir?
Can I ask you, in terms of your first floor, maybe I didn't get all the plans, but it says you're going to fill in the pool. What are you going to do with that structure, then?
So the pool's already filled in. It's a -- the pool will be connected to the, as it is now, to the commercial space, which is 50% of the whole building, and it's going to its proposed storage, which is associated with the retail area.
So it's not going to be living space?
No, it's not, no. The entire first floor of the building is all commercial space, which is 50% of the actual entire square footage. Selling large items, Mrs. McCarland.
But --
Furnishing, home furnishing.
That's why I was a little confused. The plan that I'm looking for, looking at, the proposed first floor shows a fill-in the pool.
This is going to be the retail space and the storage space.
I understand. And then the front of that is going to be a, looks like a two-bedroom apartment.
That's the furniture. That's the back of the building.
Okay, the back of that. You're going to have an apartment on the first floor, too?
That's not correct. No, both apartments located on the second floor. There should be a as-is plan in there, and then there's a proposed plan. The entire first level of the building is proposed retail.
Actually, I don't think we got that, so if you can get that.
Yeah, it looks like there is an apartment.
Yeah, somehow, I know you and I talked about it, and that's why I did it by what we talked about. If you can get -- yeah. No.
No?
I mean, I think it's great that you're going to redo this property.
Choose a sitting room, is that what?
Pardon?
Sitting room, what?
He's saying that's going to be all commercial. You and I are looking at the same plan, proposed first floor.
That's a mistake on the actual plan. I'm just seeing now that the proposed first floor, that bedroom, eight-by-14 bedroom, is not a bedroom. That's all, that whole first level's proposed commercial space. There's no living space down there at all.
Okay.
The only two residential units are on the second level, front and back of that existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Good pickup.
That's good, Joe. Thank you.
That's very good. So if we will need a revised plan.
Okay.
Showing that. That should not hold up any decision the board chooses to make this evening?
Yeah. You're just talking floor plans.
Yeah, just for the proposed first floor plan. Second floor, we already have.
Okay, are there any -- Craig?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The plan shows 10 parking spaces, I believe, if I'm reading it correctly, in the parking study or whatever the requirements are, there would be -- would need to be so many spaces set aside for the residential section and so many.
And seven through 10 are for the apartment.
Okay, so they don't get double-counted?
Right, exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? Good? Okay, any other questions? Would anyone in the audience care to make any more comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Craig?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Also, aye.
Carrie's?
Move to approve the waivers for two sets of drainage calculations and map pursuant to Paragraph 400 as requested based on the facts presented by the applicant.
Second.
All in favor? Craig?
Aye.
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 Mary?
Aye.
Bill?
Myself. Aye.
Yeah, you don't have to do roll call now.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the C-H1 zoning district. Two, the reduction in lot coverage is a positive improvement. Three, the elimination of parking directly in front of the building and the closing up of the curb cut on Route 28 is a safety enhancement. Four, there is an existing cart path on the easterly side of the property that serves one dwelling. The parking, as proposed, would not inhibit access to and from this property. Five, the granting of these special permits will allow the property to come into compliance. Six, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the person intent of the bylaw. Eight of seven, parking calculations are based on the use being in the category of a, quote, "furniture and home furnishings, large appliances, lumber, showroom, or other retail display of large items." Eight, the commercial area makeup more than the required 33% of the floor area of the building are buildings, and it is located at the front of the building, facing the street, and shall be located on the ground level. Nine, there is a requirement minimum of 10,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit. Ten, the parking complies with the requirements of Article 9 Off-Street Parking Regulations. Eleven, adequate outdoor landscape public area has been provided as part of the landscaping requirement. Twelve, the mixed-use special permit complies with the requirement of 325-55 site plan approval. Thirteen, screening of parking complies with the provisions of 325-43.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No. How'd that vote go, Charlene, okay?
Perfect.
Good.
Move to approve case PB 2019-12, Brian Langlier, trustee Atall, and Janet E. Genetti, trustee as owners, to allow for mixed-use retail display of large items associated storage in two apartments for property located at 815 Route 28, MAP 24, parcel W 6-2 in the CH1 zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-51m and 55. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
Can I second for the purpose of conversation?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to propose adding a condition that the applicant provide the updated.
I was going to suggest that be a condition under the site plan approval.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sir?
Is it just for indoor storage or is it exterior and in?
Indoor.
Indoor.
Indoor storage, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Go.
No, you need a favor, I suppose, no.
Actually, it's been seconded. You need to vote, yeah.
No more comments?
No.
We can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed?
To approve with conditions, case number PB 219-12, Brian Langlier, Atall, and Janet E. Genetti, trustee as owners, to allow mixed use? No, we already did that.
Bottom of the page, sir.
Got you. To approve with conditions, case number PB 219-12, Brian Langlier, trustees at all, and Janet E. Genetti, trustee as owners, for site plan review special permit with waivers to reconfigure the existing parking areas for property located at 815 Route 28, MAP 24, parcel W 6-2 in the CH1 zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-51m and 55. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich and following conditions. One, all signs shall comply with the sign code and building department requirements. Two, this decision shall be recorded at the possible registry of deeds. Three, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to 400-18G Inspection Certification of Completion and as-bill plan of the Code of the Town of Harwich shall be met.
And for a revised first-floor plan be submitted. Would you entertain that?
Item number four.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Carrie's? Okay.
Mary, you seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have my main second man here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay.
Okay, so the next -- Charlene, this is Stone Horse. Read this into the record?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item.
You need to open it. You actually need to open this public hearing.
Okay. So the next item that we're going to have a hearing for is PB 2019-13, Main Street Stone Horse LLC. As owner, Carol William Riley Esquire, seeks approval of a site plan review special permit with waivers and a special permit for structures greater than 7,500 square feet to redevelop the property known as the Stone Horse. The proposal includes the construction of two new dormitory buildings in paren's Board of Appeals Decision 2018-32, comma, granted October 31st, 2018, closed paren's, a pertinent sheds site improvements, demolition of three motel buildings, one wood-framed dwelling, and two sheds, reconfiguration of the existing driveways and parking areas, renovation of the existing office/dwelling, and the relocation and rehabilitation of the gazebo. The property is located at 872 Route 28, MAP 25, parcel A2, in the C-H-1 zoning district. This application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-9, -51, and -55. Charlene?
I defer to Mr. Riley.
Mr. Riley.
Good evening. Bill Riley, representing Main Street Stone Horse LLC. Due to your depleted numbers, we want to let you guys get home and watch the Bruins.
Wow.
So we would request, respectfully request a continuance to the 14th debate.
Okay. Thank you so much for this request.
What's the date, Ms. Riley?
May 14.
May 14th.
You can make the motion, Mary. I know you're dying to.
Move to continue the public hearing for PB 2019-13, Main Street Stone Horse LLC as owner, to May 14th, 2019, at 6:30 PM.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's? Go Bruins.
Huh?
Thank you, Bill.
Is that a record?
Yeah, it's a record for me. So the next item on the list has already been continued.
You may just want to do a remain if anybody's here for the burial ground that has been continued.
So number two. So, number two D, PB 2019-14, town of Harwich.
You already opened it, you don't need to do that. You took that up first.
I thought you just said.
No, no, I just said, as a reminder, this has been continued.
I was trying to get that down, Charlene.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't have to read the whole thing.
So we're going to continue this burial ground. If there's anybody here that has any comments, please come back on the 14th and we'll hear them then. Thank you. Okay. Hey, folks, could you please carry on your discussions outside the meeting room, please?
John.
Thank you very much. Next is the public meeting portion, section three A, any new business which would be an informal discussion, 521 Route 28, Ron Remondino, care of Thomas Moore.
Good evening, Ron Remondino, Thomas Moore, and we're here for an informal discussion about an addition that we want to, Mr. Remondino wants to add on to his building at 521. Not sure if you have anything as far as any plans?
We don't.
I have a couple.
You do.
I don't.
Yeah, hold on.
You received a plot plan showing proposed addition and you received the first floor plan and the elevations and the second floor plan. It was in the packet, it was in my packet.
I have a couple.
Plot plan, here, here.
He's a, he's a. Thank you.
I'm good, thanks, Tom. Thank you very much, yep. Well, we're certainly glad to have you and.
And I think what we're looking to do is, yeah, some direction as far as what we need to do to come formally with this. Right now, the 521, it's a mixed-use building, it's a retail building, and there is an apartment in the rear of it. This addition that we're looking to put on, yeah, both the first floor and the second floor is, will be for, you know, all retail space.
Okay.
Is there going to be retail space on the second floor?
Yes.
How will that be addressed through handicap access?
But, that's one of the things that we'll be looking to do. I'm not sure at the moment.
Okay.
But if that's something that we'll, we will have to address one way or another.
Yeah, the building, building will definitely want.
That's significant, that's a significant change.
It just dawned on me, because I didn't realize you were going second floor too. So that may create a new, you may have to put an elevator in or go to the architectural access board for variance.
Okay.
Just nothing to do with this board, but.
Yep.
Where is it on 28? I'm sorry.
Straight across Forest.
Name the name of the place, that might help.
Sativa is, is a building that Mr. Remondino runs, but it's right next door to that, to the left of that, if you're looking straight on, so.
Little coal property. You know the. You come down past the golf course down Forest Street?
Yeah.
Come to 28.
It used to be a cook shop.
If you went straight.
It was a cook shop?
It used to be the cook shop, yes. Yep. Got some columns in the front.
It's to the left of Sativa.
To the left of that.
You know, when you come, when you come down Forest and you hit 28, the building right, the store right in front of it is Sativa. There's a store to the left, they share the parking lot.
Yes, I know.
It's a building to the left.
Okay.
Okay, I know where we are.
So loose.
Thank you.
Trying to fill in, you know, kind of a corner on the property.
Yep.
Create some second floor space also.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Will the additional retail space, both second floor and the new addition, require additional parking spaces than what is there now? And if so, what is your plan for that?
I think just based on a rough calculation that I've done, at least at this point, it's, I believe that it's roughly twenty square, twenty parking spaces that we would may need.
And today you have.
Seventeen, at least at the moment. But, yep, that still is, yep.
TBD?
Yeah.
At this point, okay.
So that's the addition of three spaces, parking spaces.
It'd be very tight to try to add anything to that.
So you got seventeen and you need twenty?
That would be determined, yes. That does a rough calculation, but, yeah, if we have to modify something as far as, and that's based on the square footage, I believe, just, if I remember reading in the bylaws, a hundred and fifty square feet per parking space, and I think there's like 2,700 square feet that's being proposed. And then one for, 1.25 for the apartment back. Comes out to about 20 spaces, I believe, yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Craig?
Yes, thank you. Is that something that a waiver could be asked for or is that something that's considered or granted? I mean, I just heard it earlier, I'm not that familiar with it, so that's why I'm just asking.
Through site plan review, not through waiver of site plan, but through site plan review, the board is empowered under the zoning bylaw to grant waivers from parking requirements.
I'm not sure, we're gonna, I'm not saying we're asking for that, I'm just asking a question.
Because you definitely are outside the 300 feet to the town parking lot on School House, so you can't use that to offset your parking here. If there is a vacant, if I might through, sorry, kind of dove in here. If there is another commercial property nearby that you can share some parking with, that is always, you know, that the board has looked at that in the past.
Okay. So I'm not sure how these informals go, so that's.
No, that, I mean.
Because there hasn't been one in ages.
It's okay.
How do you want it to go?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, we've talked about parking, we've talked about if you have part of your business located on the second floor, so you know that you have the ADA component to deal with, Charlene's already pointed that out, so those are all considerations, I think, that you have to, as a part of your planning. Anything else that you are concerned about?
No, I think that our biggest concern was the parking. And, yeah, because I think, certainly as far as the building itself, it is an 1800 building, you know, I think the addition that we're trying to keep that same character of the building.
That's great.
I do believe you have to go to historic for the addition.
Yeah. That's enough.
Yeah, I believe it is over 100 years old.
Over 100 years old.
It is.
So that's another, that's a third consideration that you would have?
And just a couple of things, I think I gave you the checklist for site plan review when you and I met, if not, it's, we can get you a copy or you can find it on the website. It's hard to find, so if you can't, I'll understand. But anything that's required on the site plan, you need to provide, and if you're not going to, you need to request a waiver from that particular provision of the bylaw. And I'm happy to, you know, go over any plans that you may have as you.
At this point, you just get the site plan together?
Yep. And I'm happy to look at that before you even submit it. If you want, you know, do your preliminary list of waivers, and then I can kind of compare them and review and see if you're missing anything. I'm happy to do that, if I have the time to do it before you make application.
Okay.
If I may, I'll just speak to the notice of intent, which is under the demo delay bylaw through the historic district and historic commission. So that's just the notice of intent, it has to get published, so there is a, there is a timing with that. And it's, it's a partial demolition, it is, anything is being touched inside or outside, then it requires, if the building is on the 100-year list, it requires the notice of intent before the historic commission.
Okay, but not, that, does that, well, that's a different.
It's not a, it's not a certificate of appropriateness, it's not a historic district, it is under the demo delay bylaw, so we would, you would just be required to file for the notice of intent, it gets published, I believe, for two weeks, and then comes before the board on that.
And not necessarily, they're not necessarily going to delay it, they're just.
Delay is, so, delay is always an option for the board, that's part of, that's part of the way the bylaw is written. But, but hopefully, based on what your plans are, that wouldn't, hopefully would not likely be the scenario you'd be facing, so.
Okay.
Just throw that out there.
Is there anything else?
I mean.
Anybody has?
Nothing.
I, I mean, I think this is a great idea to come and, you know, ask questions and let those that have experience or those that know really help. You do it the right way, I think it's a, it's a good move and we appreciate it very much.
Which is public hearing go.
Yeah.
No, this is just.
This is just a.
An informal.
Oh, I know that, I'm saying, when we get to the.
Yeah, when we get to the public hearing, it should go a lot, a lot smoother, so.
This is the commercial part of it.
Right.
Do you have any more questions or?
I don't, I think, I guess, that's, you're kind of what I was here just to get, get some, a little bit more direction, I guess, and, yeah, we'll get a formal site plan together and.
Yep, and one other thing which has nothing to do with this board, but certainly is important, I don't know if you've spoken with Megan Eldridge, the health director, yet?
Not yet.
But definitely have a conversation with her before you do anything to make sure you can do what you want to do from a septic standpoint with the increase in, you know, floor area and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So have a conversation with her.
Title, title five.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we really should, this is a.
Thank you.
Letting us help you, thank you. So the next meeting minutes, Charlene.
There are none.
There are none.
White's blank.
Okay. Okay, next, we have advisory opinions.
I didn't have that in my packet either.
I didn't see, I haven't seen either.
It's on the back of your agenda.
Right, right.
Really?
Yeah, I was not fond of that, but yes, that's where it is.
Okay, so, we have. One, two, three, four, five. So the first is case 2019-04, this has been continued from the 27th of March, Thomas and Ann Chipman, applied for a special permit to build an addition onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section 325, table two, area regulations as set forth in MGL chapter 40A, section six. The property is located at 20 Bayberry Road, MAP 24, parcel K1-5 in the RR zoning district.
You don't need to read each of these if you don't want to, Mr. Chairman, because these are, this is whether you want to make recommendations or comments to the zoning board of appeals, so.
Why don't we all just take a moment, read through this, and if anybody has any comments, then we'll, we'll discuss them.
I will let you know on the last item, 2019-13 for 119 Julian Road, I actually did write a letter recommending that the variant, recommendation for the variance, this is one of those properties that got caught with the zoning change that we are proposing regarding the height of a building in a flood area, A-zone or V-zone. So this property got caught.
Yep.
And if the bylaw, under the existing bylaw, they could do it without a problem, under the new bylaw, they're, they need a variance from the height.
Okay, is the new bylaw?
The new bylaw goes in, the new bylaw is effective the first day that is actually published in the newspaper.
Yep.
If it does not pass at town meeting, then it goes bye. But once something is advertised in the newspaper, you have to abide by that zoning amendment, even though it's not technically in the books yet.
It's public record, right?
It's mass general law, 40A, section five, it's very confusing, so they are needing to proceed with their project, so that's why they're going for a variance under provision that does not yet exist, and that's why they're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. I mean, this really got, they got caught.
Yep.
In between the changes, so I did write a letter, you know, just saying that this is what happened, it is a unique situation, so I did write a favorable letter on that.
How far above the height requirement are they?
I think three feet. Yeah, it, it, I don't even know if it's three, it might be 3.2 feet, it's, yeah.
And that's, that's above the current? Current?
Ironically, the height of the building will still remain the same, but because they have to lift it up, that's kicking them up over, and also, as Bill would know, it's an older house, so it doesn't meet today's construction requirements. So now you need two-by-six construction as opposed to a two-by-four construction, the height of the ceilings has changed dramatically since this building, so everything has gone, it's a domino effect, that the height has had to increase, so.
And they're, okay.
That's, you know, to build what they would like to build, you know, it, it is going to be too high.
I don't have any comments on anything.
And I had no comments on any of the other ones except that one.
Okay. I, I don't either, unless anybody else does.
I have no comments.
Craig? Joe?
None.
Mary?
None.
Bill? Good? Okay. Advisory opinions, old, any old business?
I'm not sure where this applies, this is, I guess, more of a question. The sign regulation, or the signs regulations that currently exist for signs in the window, specifically what I'm asking about, is there anything, I'm thinking worst-case scenario, somebody puts in a TV in appliance store and they put a 60-inch TV in the front window and they have it on 24 hours a day, it's not advertising the business.
Not a sign.
It's not a sign. Is there any, is that a concern, is that something that needs to be looked at to prevent issues in the future?
That's up to you guys. We haven't had any issues that I'm aware of in that respect.
That might even fall underneath traffic.
What would it fall under?
Might come underneath traffic.
Might, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I.
Never thought of it. Not looking to make work, but I just wondered, it hit me when there was conversation about what this building is going to be, and for some reason I thought, you know, if a TV appliance store went in there, and then I had that thought, it's not really a sign advertising the business, it would be disruptive certainly to traffic in the neighborhood if it were on 24/7, but if no regulation, they can't. They can, I guess.
Yep. Any other items for old business? So we're, we're still looking for two alternates?
Yes.
Okay, have you heard anything on that, Charlene?
No.
I've not heard from, from anyone yet, so.
But also, I don't get notified when there's applications, so.
Okay.
I happened to meet Mr. Brophy in the coffee shop the other day, I tried to beat up on him a little bit, but.
He won't budge.
He's married to Florida.
Yes, he is, he sounded like he had a good time.
Yeah. Well, we got briefings and reports, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'm the board's representative of the Capitol Outlay.
Yep.
And we are going to meet, I'm assuming, for the recommended, I haven't talked to the chairman, but he set a meeting up for the Capitol Outlay next week.
You, you have a meeting, actually, this Thursday, and you're discussing the charter amendment being, or the general bylaw charter amendment being proposed for the Capitol Outlay Committee. I know that because I'm their recording secretary.
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, sir.
Okay. So, I, I've got a question, Joe, the Capitol Outlay, for this, this is for the upcoming board meeting that we're having?
Upcoming town meeting?
Town meeting, I think it is.
Well, the, the Capitol Outlay Committee has already recommended all the items on the Capitol Plan as been proposed.
And what's the total, what's the number? Seventy million?
I don't know those things off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I, I don't know, I don't.
Joe, you don't know?
No.
I, I don't, I don't recall.
Without having the plan in front of me.
It's been a long time since we have, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I assume we're meeting Thursday.
That's only to do, to go over the charter amendment that's being proposed.
I see, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Two points. The warrant should have the budget and it is on the town web, website.
There's also hard copies available.
And there are hard copies in, around town hall. I believe they're in the Sluckman's office.
Yes, you have to ask for them.
Question through you to Charlene. Are we going to do the traditional posting so that we are seated at a meeting at, during town meeting? Okay.
And then we stay?
We typically post.
We post for a meeting.
We post for the meeting.
And we stay in session through town meeting.
Through the town meeting, yeah. Yep, we did that. We did that last year, so we'll do it again. It was a good, it was a good, it was a good thing to do.
Oh, if I might, huh, we actually found a Scribner's error in one of the zoning amendments. It's not fatal. It's actually quite easy. In the, actually the height in the flood zone, special district area, we have, we say change such and such, old section one oh-eight to one oh-nine. We already have a one oh-nine. How nobody caught this, I don't know. So the motion will be to move the article as printed in the warrant with the exception that references to section one point nine, it's three twenty-five, one point nine, will now be three twenty-five dash one oh-eight point one.
What are the new height requirements in the flood zone?
It's the same height requirement. We didn't change it. It's just what it allows for, Bill, is if you are now at elevation three and you have a thirty-foot-high house and you're in a, a zone, you need to go a foot above and let's say it's a ten-foot elevation. You can now raise that up, if you need, you don't want to, you don't have to, to elevation eleven. But as you know, the way we define the height of a building, it's from your natural grade up. So now you're going to be three feet higher than that. The, the way it is now and the example we've used is the, the house down on Route twenty-eight and West Harwich that they're doing that beautiful job with. I mean, it looks great.
Captain's Row House, huh?
One of the, in the Captain's Row area. They elevated that house. They had to go to the zoning board of appeals because they didn't change anything, but because they elevated it and put it, it under a, you know, put a, a new foundation under it. It went above the thirty feet and they needed a variance from the height. And it was like, well, that is just quite onerous. Because you're, you're, you're making it better by getting it out of the floodplain.
So what's, there's a new height on the, on the floodplain, correct? It's gone from eight to twelve feet or something like that?
Oh, you mean the flood elevations themselves? Oh, gosh, they're all over the place. That changed in two thousand and fourteen. And in some places that weren't flood zone before are now flood zone. So depending upon the area, it has changed dramatically in some areas. Yeah, you'd have to look at the individual maps. Anytime you want to come in, I'll be happy to, to look at them with you.
The reason they're bringing that house up is to get out of the.
Exactly.
Flood zone.
And we wanted to make it less of a regulatory deal for people so that they can do it by right. What we didn't do, and that's where this house that I wrote the letter is getting caught, is that they're doing a tear-down rebuild for this house. Under the existing bylaw, they can do a tear-down rebuild under provision that we're changing. Under ours, this new bylaw is only for existing houses being raised or elevated.
So this one, tear-down rebuild?
That is a tear-down rebuild.
So why can't they meet the height requirements?
They have already spent a year, over a year on the design of the house and they were ready to file and then they realized that this zoning amendment went in. So they literally got caught. And they'd have already been through conservation and they've already been through board of health.
Move to adjourn.
Excuse me, I have one question.
I revoke my motion.
Thank you, sir. I don't know what the, the, the cost of mailing these packages is. We could probably look, two fifty. I'm going to request that send me an email or something when the paper packet is ready.
We would love to do that.
And I'll stop into town hall and get it and if anybody else.
Staff has tried to do that and we don't get any responses, so I'm glad you say that. If people would rather, I mean, Mary's, we just bring down to her. If people would prefer to pick them up, we are happy to send out an email saying, packets are done. You want to come pick them up? Because it also can delay the mailings, you know, and because of me being out for two and a half weeks and Monday, last Monday being a holiday, you know, I got the packets out later than I usually do. And some of you may not have even gotten them until Monday. I don't know, but, you know.
I, I think.
Did you good.
I like my electronic, but.
I think it's a good idea, frankly. I mean, I, if, if, how does everybody feel about this? Joe, any comments?
You want us to come in and pick them up instead of mailing them?
If people want to do that, that'd be great because one of the packets we sent out cost almost eight dollars apiece to send out. It was so huge.
So instead of sending me an email, would you send me a text, please?
I need your cell number if you'll give me your cell number later. Don't give it to me now because we're on the air.
Before we have a motion, I just want to remind everyone that CPC articles are on the town meeting agenda. So I encourage everyone on the board to attend and encourage everyone on, in TV land to.
Attend town meeting.
Attend town meeting on May sixth and probably May seventh. Those, those CPC items will require town approval at town meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I thank you for bringing that up because I think it's very, very important that everyone listening knows and understands that this is your opportunity to speak up and vote. And, and, you know, when we have maybe, you know, two or, two or three out of every ten residents voting, to me, doesn't, doesn't make much sense, especially.
And also, if people have questions on any of the articles before town meeting, staff is always happy to talk to people. I mean.
That's right.
Truly. If, if you're confused about something, there's a zoning article you don't understand, come and talk to me. If there is something else you don't understand, you know, if it has to do with the water department, give the water department a call. You know, any of the town departments, the staff, we're all willing to, to talk to people on any of these articles.
Okay.
Are we, Mr. Chairman, are, do we have any presentation at ATM?
Do you? We do. We usually do.
Well, actually, the way we did it this year, just so you know, is your report is already printed in the warrant.
Yep.
So unless there's a question directed to you all, and also I'm allowed to speak as a, as a, you know, you can defer to me if you want or if you're comfortable answering it, I'll be hiding up in the back with the non-resident taxpayers.
Yeah, okay. So I thought I did hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.